Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
A second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Alright, has everyone had a chance to read through the meeting minutes? Do I have a motion to adopt the minutes?
Motion to adopt.
Second?
Or you could third it.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, public comment. Joel, you want to go ahead first?
Hello? Yeah.
Hi Joel.
Yeah, Joel Haugen, fellow Scapoo'sian. So just a quick update on the, we talked, I think, last meeting about the notion of putting in temporary fill in at the Chapman for a rudimentary kayak launch. In the Corps of Engineers, that would probably be, you could probably put a whole beach in with the Corps of Engineers fill. But that, actually, that might not be a bad idea to start the ball rolling on that if you want a beach there. But, but the other issue was, you know, can you put a X amount of fill for into a waterway without a permit? And the answer is yes. According to Division of State Lands Guidance, you can put up to 50 cubic yards of fill in any given five-year period. So, along the shore of that is, you can make a rudimentary kayak canoe paddleboard launch there by putting like a dump truck load of 10 yards of riprap, and then put in 10 yards of sand. The riprap would probably withstand the annual flow, and then just put another 10 loads the next season. That would get you three years of a rudimentary kayak launch. And, you know, very little cost. The sand gravel folks would probably donate the sand gravel. City has a dump truck, you know, so that'd be, I think, be a neat thing to do. Kind of in the context of moving the ball forward. And then, secondly, this current New Yorker has a wonderful article on pickleball that I think would be worthy of sharing. Under fair use doctrine, you can make 230 copies and not worry about copyrights. So I'm gonna give that to you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so from the city, what would, if we were, so since we've talked about a kayak launch a lot, if we were to investigate that idea, what would be the next thing that we would do?
Need to do some thinking on that one.
Okay.
You know, and I was gonna get to it in my city update here, but the Parks Master Plan is coming real soon around the corner.
Yep.
By, by real soon, I mean August.
August.
So, all these, these ideas and everything, it's, it's well timed.
Okay. Okay, perfect.
If I can interrupt you. City officially had, even serious thought and actually supported putting sand on that beach you're talking about. But the problem was, is they were, and through the issues of the here, which were a little bit complicated. And I think that when we could, like, like you were saying, as we get to the master plan, I think we can really be thoughtful about what we can do there. We ran into a situation with the Corps that you couldn't even put a post in the ground because it, you know, the drainage district's really concerned about effects on the dike itself. So, you know, like he said, I think when we get into the, to the master planning, it was a great opportunity to figure out how to lay that whole.
So, so Mike, according to the Corps guidance, they, they're only concerned with 35 feet from the toe of the dike. This is beyond that. So, you know, if Division of State Lands says fine, and, because in their guidance it says fine, and the Corps of Engineers isn't concerned about stuff beyond the 30, 35 foot from the toe of the dike. And it seems like we could just go ahead and do that.
The other thing that was of concern to the city back then, it's old news, but was the fact that the sewer outfall for the sewer plant is 20 feet from that little tree you're talking about. And they were hoping to try and add some length to it because they didn't think it would be real attractive to swimming in an area of.
Right, right, but this, this wouldn't, I, I, this is not, well, my, my notion is that this wouldn't be an official location. It's something, you know, because right now, like Kara, she uses her, launches her paddleboard from there. But it's dangerous, you know, if there's a drop off, and you could remedy that with just some fill, which is legal, and, and just do it. And, you know, I don't see how that's going to interfere with anything. Anyway, just my thoughts.
Well, I think that's something that we can, I, I mean, I, I, we should entertain the idea and look at, look at our options. Because I do think that's something that we've talked about for several years, so, um, yes.
The, the city spent a lot of time trying to figure out where to put a dock there. We had, we did all the contours, we hired Andrew Jansky. And the problem in there was, where do you put that? And it seemed like that area was too shallow to put a dock because in the low water it would be sitting. So there was more, it seemed like the salt was thinking about putting it on the other side of the site. I'm just giving you information.
Paul, go ahead.
You also, just to clarify from the city's position, that we are, we can't really do anything until the master plan is complete?
Isaac, you answer that one? I think that regarding this one, we haven't ever had anything like it. So we're not really sure if this counts as a capital project, or if this counts as like a community donation, or what needs to be done. So we would, we would need to look at, again, like Joel said, the Corps guidance, we need to look at what our plans are there, if any. Everything before we could make a determination on what that would count as. And then ultimately, we'd have to go to council. But like we said, you know, council can change their minds at any time, and they're the policymakers. So, you know, we'll go back and look at it and go from there.
I've got enough notes here that I'll raise this with, with the Public Works Director, City Manager, and City Engineer at our next coordination meeting.
I have a quick question, Joel, in your research, do you know, like, how temporary something like that is? Like, does whatever would be deposited, like, wash away over a period of one year, two years?
The finer grain materials are gonna wash away with the current in the winter time with storms. The, the larger cobbles, which would be the base, you know, and that'll be, you could some, you could remove, you know, easily also. But 10 cubic yards is not a big amount of rock. But anyway, just something to make a nice little grade. This would be about, I think about 150 feet above the sewer outflow. But the sand, you know, the sand would probably wash away, but you put another 10 yards of sand in the next season, and it would probably remedy this for several years until maybe something can move forward with the Chapman landing and the master plan or whatever.
Well, and just, you know, I, I am heading up the Chapman Landing Committee. So I think this would be a great thing for us to discuss and see what's possible.
Yeah, yeah, and so just, just a nice, it'd be inexpensive, something we can just move the ball forward. Nudging the ball forward's good.
I think that's a great committee thing to talk about.
Okay, um, do, would you like to, do you have additional public comment, or would you like to wait until later? Perfect, okay. Casey, are you here to listen? Okay, perfect, alright. Well, then let's, oh, there is one comment that I wanted to make, just as a thank you to the public works. I noticed that there are trashcans all down CZ Trail and a lovely bench dedicated to one of our citizens who recently passed away in a spot overlooking the marsh. And looks great, it's nice, I love to see the new stuff that's popping up.
I admit, we took my lunch hour, I decided to walk that a few weeks ago, and actually sat right where that bench is. And it's, it's a really special spot.
It is.
It's the first time I've been on that part of the trail.
Yeah. Paul?
I learned from Casey today that it should be called the Crown Z Trail. He made a point at the Economic Development Committee meeting, so I thought I'd pass that on. Casey, right?
Right, and then you, we're, we're trying to keep one name, and there's all sorts of names out there. So for random purposes, Crown Z Trail.
Crown Z Trail. Okay, noted.
No problem, Casey, thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Okay, moving on to elections. So, we've got Chair and Vice Chair positions. So, first of all, Kim and I have been doing this for a couple of years, we enjoy doing it. But are there, is there anybody else who is interested, or thoughts from the committee?
Well, I'd like to nominate Mike Sykes for Vice Chair. And I think Kim has done a great job. And I think that Mike would be just a wonderful person in that position because we'd have a really great liaison with the city. Mike has been extremely effective as a County Commissioner many years ago. The City Manager, he did many great things for the City of Scapoose, and continues that, that trajectory with Columbia River PUD. So, I just think that would be a really great move for this group.
Mike, are you interested in, in running for Vice Chair?
I should have committed, but I'd be on the committee.
And he's also very humble.
Okay, how about for Chair? Any other, or any other nominations for Vice Chair?
I'll go ahead and say I am, I will throw my hat in to continue that role primarily for the continuity on the 50-year planning committee.
Well, I guess I'll throw my hat in for Chair. Okay. Any other nominations? For Chair or Vice Chair?
Done a great job as Chair, should continue.
Yeah, you've done a great job.
Okay.
Excuse me, Yul or Isaac? You know, as Kim has been working on the 50-year plan, if by chance Mike becomes the Vice Chair, would, can Kim still stay on the 50-year plan committee? Because she's already six or seven months into it already.
So originally, the way that was set up is we invited the Chairs of the Committees. And what had happened is Kara said, I'm gonna pass, and I'd like to ask him to do it. So if Kara's reelected, we would ask Kara if she would want to do it again, and she could pass or not. So yes, Kim could continue, the committee could select somebody different, or the Chair could ask somebody different to do it. But yeah, she could, for continuity, I, I mean, that's up to the committee or the Chair.
I'm already on that committee, so.
Okay, so, for Chair, I'll, I'll throw my hat in again. So, I have to have a motion, I've done this three times.
Technically, everything has to have a nomination and a second.
Make a motion to unanimous ballot be cast for you.
Do I have a second?
One second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So for Vice Chair, now, we haven't had this. What was that?
One person.
Okay. Right, well, so we'll start with vote.
Who do we, who all do we have on the committee on the phone?
We, so, that's a good point. So Michael Leipzig resigned today from EDC and Parks, he's no longer a member of this committee. Everybody else is here, that would be Kara, Kim, JJ, Paul, Brian, Andrew, I believe I heard him on the phone, and Mike Sykes. Seven voting members.
Well, and I, I wonder if we might want to do like a paper ballot? So, I think that would be a better way to do that.
We can do that. Give me a half a second. Want me to get some scratch paper?
Isaac, I, Isaac, I'll test, I'll text you my vote.
Alright, and then whoever's calling in online, you can either text me if you have my number, or just email me real quick, and I'll take a look at this.
Should I collect the votes, or would that be?
Come back and get them once I start getting emails and. Folks online, were you able to email or text here? I put my phone number in the chat box if you want to text me.
That's something I need to heal, so.
Get it?
Don't worry about rescinding it, we'll get that one. Paul, did you send yours in? Yep?
Yes, I sent to your, to your text, to your phone.
Got it, alright, cool, it's a few minutes late. Just forwarded it to you. Got everybody's vote except Andrew, I believe you're on the phone as a call-in.
Andrew?
Give him a minute, he might be like, on his phone texting or something.
Stop that, Paul. No dog kissing during the meeting.
Sometimes you just can't help it.
You received anything from him?
No. Person with 5033498614, we can't hear you. Please dial. There we go, are you Paul? Hi.
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm Brian, like, my video, audio wasn't working at all, so I, I called in so I could actually hear.
God, okay, so we don't have Andrew. We are currently split 3-3, so unless we have somebody who wants to change their vote, or a nominee that wants to step down, we will have to vote again, or we can proceed to the next meeting without a Vice Chair. We have more members to re-vote.
Re-vote, next move. I'm okay with Pat, I mean, honestly, I've, I've held a few positions, I, and I'm glad just to be a member of the committee. So I'm, I'm, I'll just change my vote.
Voting is now 4-2.
Okay.
With Kim.
Do I have a motion to adopt Kim to continue as Vice Chair? Oh, that was the vote. Easy, alright, I love it. Okay.
Never a dull meeting.
Okay, moving on, city update, the 50-year plan vision statement. Now, who, did you want to start on that, Kim?
Yeah, so we had another meeting Tuesday of this week, which primarily focused on of summarizing all of the community feedback that we've gotten. I think they, in total, between the town hall, the survey, and the community conversations we had, which I think there were about nine of, we touched, we had about 500 responses in that. Got a lot of good qualitative information. And so we focused on summarizing that, which basically has been distilled into this mission statement that you guys got, that Isaac circulated for you. And I think they did a really good job. There were some very clear themes that emerged from all of the feedback that was provided. There was some discussion, there may be some changes being made to the language around this. But I think by and large, there was consensus about the direction that this was headed. But I did want to make sure that this group got a chance to review it, provide feedback. And what would be the mechanism for feedback? Send it to you, Isaac, myself?
It could be you, you could take it to them, it could be me, and I can take it to the committee. I mean, either way, it's gonna filter there, so whatever people are comfortable with, I'm happy to do it.
Okay, I would say either way, if you, maybe if you guys send it to Isaac, just so you see me. Because I think, again, if there are some common themes that emerge from the group, we'll probably want to be able to summarize that.
Yeah, and that's the only reason you might want to be involved, is I can't really speak for the committee. I mean, I can transmit data, but I, it's not my role to say what the, what this group or anybody thinks.
Okay, so any feedback to both of you, Isaac and Kim, email? Okay, great, I mean, I think it's a great start, I really liked content.
And just to let you, as the liaison kind of my role, I'm kind of being used to here. So do, anything that you want me to communicate to the council as well, I guess, would, that would be great.
Okay, okay, perfect.
I want to add, if you, if you let me, I'm also been at the meetings or listening in. A big thing, a point that was made was that this is a land use plan, but the Parks Master Plan is gonna tie into it directly. So, it is really important, the work that we do on the Parks Master Plan and the 50-year plan, that they're gonna be working together. And it wasn't really apparent to me until we really talked about it on Tuesday. So, besides, you know, what are our needs or whatever, but it's also about open spaces and everything else. So the Parks Master Plan's gonna be a real big part of it, so I just want to add that to the group.
Thank you, Paul. Do you have comments?
Yeah, I've got updates, so, on the Parks Master Plan. So we just issued the notice of intent to award today for MIG Incorporated. So we had two high-scoring proposals that we, we interviewed those consultant teams. They were very close, they were both, would have been, you know, are great fits. So, I know we're taking that item to City Council on the 1st of August is, is the goal. For their consideration to approve, to enter into a contract with MIG for the Parks Master Plan Comprehensive Update. The consultant is ready to hit the ground running as soon as that happens. I think they are hoping, at least their intention was, to actually get the TAC formed pretty quickly. Because they, there's, as you know, all of the public engagement stuff that needs to happen. Needs, that process needs to start because we, we're, we want the master plan to be included and ready for final adoption by City Council by July of next year. So, it, it, it's, a year's gonna go by quick, but the consultants, you know, both that we interviewed, said that that's a pretty typical timeline. So we're, we're excited to kick that project off.
Um, then, anything else on?
Yeah, I do, I got some, I got some more updates, I'll try to get through and to.
Before we move on from that, so, will they be in attendance of these meetings?
Yes.
Forward, okay.
It'll be kind of like the 50-year, where the tackle form, so it won't be just this group, it'll be Scapoose Bay Watershed Council, we'll probably invite them. Other groups in the area to identify, work with the consultant to identify the, the regular characters who would be involved in parks and open spaces and trails or whatever. And then they would schedule meetings, if it's not every month, we would still meet, probably to do Parks Master Plan business. Because they're gonna rely on this group to do a lot of the work, thought work, and talk about what priorities are, talk about what should or shouldn't be. So I, I think we're kind of planning on pretty much an intensive nine months or so of nothing but master plan, and then of course, goals. But it's gonna be a lot of work.
Yeah, I know in the, in their proposal, they had five technical advisory committee meetings between start and adoption. And so that's just over about half of the meetings between now and then. I don't know, I mean, that's subject to change, i-if they need additional meetings, then we'll have to figure out how to, how to get that scheduled. But it's, uh, in, in, I think at the next meeting of this committee, we should have our clearer picture as to moving forward, what the schedule's gonna look like for all the committee meetings, and making sure, you know, all of, everybody on this committee, plus any stakeholders that are added to a technical advisory committee, have, have that on their calendar as well in advance.
So, so yeah, it still is almost every meeting, because we'll need two or three meetings for goals. Sometimes there's a meeting in December that gets canceled, you're out of town, next meeting doesn't really count for the 10 months. So it'll be, it'll feel like almost every single meeting.
Yeah, plus, they will be in attendance for the annual town meeting. We're expecting that to be, the Parks Master Plan to be the big topic for that meeting. Now, I know in this current year, we had the, the annual town meeting a bit later in the year. You know, where exactly that's gonna fall? I think it, it worked well in April in terms of attendance, but I, I understand that for goal setting, that's challenge, that can be challenging for City Council.
That'll, we'll have to work with the consultants, both for the 50-year and, and I suspect, I suspect Parks and the 50-year figure out. And we want, because I think that they're both gonna want to be in attendance, they're both gonna.
And one of the, one of the things that I think is gonna be really great and very important in this master plan is actually attaching financial requirements for the goals that we set. Because obviously, if we don't have the money, then it goes and gets shelved, and then another few years, we do it again. And so, for me, it's really important to get things accomplished. And I believe that's gonna be a key part with the consultants coming in and looking hard at the numbers.
And, and it, it goes without saying, it is, is interesting economic times that we're in right now, particularly for on construction contracting, engineering contracting, availability of materials. Just in what, what we've seen, particularly over the last year. And so, it's, it'll, it'll be very enlightening to have some financial analysis to go along with that, and capital improvement planning. So, now, I'm, we're all, we're looking forward to it.
And I would expect for the first few meetings, there's gonna be a lot of outreach. From what my understanding is, they're gonna try to beat the kind of Christmas slump, where everybody kind of starts going on vacation, out of town, kind of moves in through, you know, November through January is slow. So I think there's gonna be a lot of work done very quickly to reach out. So I'm probably gonna lean on, on you to help do that, as, as the committee, as people in the committee.
Yeah, and the, the other thing I will, I will add as well, is the consultants aware that, that this committee has been very active in engaging the public? The first order of business for the consultant is to get all of the. survey data, whether that be, you know, going back to the very first mass, Parks Trails Open Space Plan, and then the community surveys along the way, any annual town meeting surveys, stuff that had, uh, parks in it, the Grabhorn Park Ad Hoc Committee work, and the polling around amenities, as well as the, the polling that was done at the town meeting earlier this year. And, and so they have a, a good foundation to start from, and, and the consultant did remark that, uh, that's, that's something they're really looking forward to, is having a, a group of folks that are already very engaged.
Oh, I have a question. Uh, was this group, this committee counseled on the RFP, or you just put that out there, the RFP?
No, we've, we've, we've never had a committee that's, that's been, you know, putting together an RFP.
Okay, or input, what they're looking for in the RFP? I'm just wondering, is there a way that I can get a copy of the RFP?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, it's, it's all, it's all public information, so I'd be happy to share the, the RFP with everybody.
Okay. And their, and their proposal with that, okay.
Just needed, I just need to check with the city attorney, because we're in this, we're, we're going to negotiate a contract, uh, with the identified high scorer. Um, but that's, I anticipate that to happen relatively quickly.
Well, and I have a, one other quick question, kind of in relation to that. So when we did the initial master plan, one of the things we did at one of the town meetings was that we had people, we had all the, the parks out there, and then people put little stickers on which park they supported, so how are you proposing, or how is the consultant proposing to prioritize what work needs to be done first?
So they've come up with a draft schedule, at least for their proposal, uh, they're going to be sending us an updated, uh, schedule, based on, you know, when they can actually start. Uh, there is open house meetings, they've, the town meeting will be an open house of sorts, but they also looking to have an open house earlier in the process, because by the time we get to late winter, early spring, that's already pretty far along in the process, so they've got to front load those activities. I don't have the schedule in front of me right this moment, but, um-
But so I guess, so my real question is, um, because I think it's going to be the financials being in place, but also understanding in what order these things are going to take place, so that we know what to really focus on.
Right.
And I think that's been a bit of a disconnect sometimes in this committee.
We don't, as, as staff, we don't, if we could do that, we would, but we, we don't have the-
No, no, I'm wondering if the, if the consultants, if that's going to be part of their, okay.
They will, um, but they don't, they won't always, when they're proposing, you know, they have a lot of information they have to get across in a very prescribed space, and so they don't always tell us, here's the analytical methods, here's how we're going to get it. But typically, you know, they're going to look at the survey datas, they're going to do more outreach, they're going to get all of the information, and through whatever machinations they use of analytics and, you know, studied skills on how they determine what priorities are, they will come work with the committee and define what these priorities are. So it, it's part of it, it'll be done for sure, because we, we as staff need it as well to know, what, what are we going to do next year?
You know, at the end of the day, existing master plan was really, uh, really did an incredible job of, all the guy reached, there was a hundred fifty people showed up on meeting, and we're, pick out sessions for each park, so I, I think we have a lot of good information. And, um, so, and I think a lot of our priorities are pretty, are going to be pretty obvious, and probably a lot of the same ones we have now. Don't, don't expect a lot of change, but, um, I think we're going to really spend a lot of time on is looking at the detail of the Chapman Landing, you know, patrol comes in and talks about that, well, we've talked about that, but it's a lot more complicated than that.
Yes.
So I think really kind of getting a sense of what it is we really want to do. And if you're asking me as far as priorities go, I, I would say that we really need to go back and hopefully they'll focus Grabhorn, because if you look at the last three parks that Scapus has purchased, that they've developed, all of them have been developed by grant monies, match monies from the state. There's a window open for Grabhorn, and we would be perilous to miss that opportunity, it's seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. Just hoping that when we have those conversations, that we can-
Push that to the top, yeah, I agree.
Challenges, but I, I just hate to-
I think that's a good segue. Oh, go, go ahead.
Yeah, so MIG did, um, the Twalton Parks Master Plan. And it's excellent, so if anyone wants to see the kind of work that they've done, I suggest they read the Twalton Parks Master Plan. And then like JJ, for instance, they do have an appendix A that shows how much, uh, you know, funding expenditure, and then also some sources. And maybe we can look at that plan and say, hey, you know, based on the work you've done in the past, we'd like to see a little more work, a little more detail in this area or this area, we might be able to guide them a little bit, but it's a good start to see what they, they, they've done in the past, and um, I'm really glad you guys picked those, that group, because they're excellent, from what I've seen so far, just by reading all these master plans.
I would like to segue then into-
I've got an update on Grabhorn.
Let's get it.
Yeah, okay, so I met, met with the consultant, uh, this morning. Arbor's report, uh, had some issues, uh, they needed some additional survey work in order to geospatially locate the trees in relation to the property line. There was a hiccup with the sub consultant, uh, they had their project manager change jobs, so there was a delay in getting that stuff updated. We're expecting it in the next two to three weeks. Wetland delineation reports being submitted to DSL and the Army Corps of Engineers for concurrency. Uh, so DSL will make some determination about the wetland area that was on there. The wetland biologist had found point six acres of a wetland in the northwestern corner of the property. DSL will help determine, you know, what, well, and the Army Corps of Engineers will help determine what mitigation options are available. Ultimately, uh, that will become more clear once there's a design that, that the committee and, and council agrees on. And on that note, the consultant is working on several concepts, um, several options for the committee's consideration and council's consideration. We're hope, I was told, we're, we should see those towards the end of August.
And those options for different uses of the park or different places, like where the roads go?
No, 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 not the road, that, that was, in the recommendations, the committee does not want the road in those plans. So, but the, the list of recommendations that the Grabhorn Park Ad Hoc Committee transmitted to city council was about eleven or twelve items, so things that the committee wants to have prioritized or see what can work there, and I know there was basketball courts, pickleball courts. There were some priority given to softball and soccer. And so what they're going to do is, it's a lot of stuff to fit in one space, and they're going to try some different configurations. And then at that time, share them with this group, get your feedback. They're going to have, they're going to have to get creative with some parking options, and that's what we told them as well. And so we're going to see what the consultant comes up with.
So as part of the Grabhorn Committee, there were several issues that came up with the road, going through the dog park, no other feasible place for a dog park, the trees that are there that created a windbreak, there were several, several issues that came up.
How about, is there any contemplation of moving the road down towards the, the house? I mean, was that, was that considered to maybe putting, moving the road all the way down to the bottom, towards the house? Could be in the floodplain, but it wouldn't be in the floodway.
Well, I would say, Paul and I met with the police chief and the fire chief, and I think they were both expressing some, they were saying, you know, it would, it would be nice to have it in terms of emergency access. They would actually want to see traffic also mitigated on that, like they would want bollards or something that would prevent traffic for safety. And actually, they want to see some changes to the existing Roger Crusoe Way in terms of the parking there and that, so I think in general, the feedback we got was that we, they did not want the road for the purpose of driving.
I think, I think the thing with the, we, I don't think the road going to the east side, that would be by the creek, was ever considered, because that would really split the park, because you'd have to kind of come west with it to connect to Roger Crusoe, or it would just kind of dead end. So I think that the goal was to limit a road, period.
So-
So alternate configurations weren't considered during Grabhorn.
You're still going to have to have some kind of road to a parking lot, or maybe you put the parking lot, but what you're saying is at the next meeting, we're going to see some of those configurations, so that we can kind of move the project off to its center, and if we have an opportunity to, some component of it forward.
Right.
But if, if we can get those concepts in time for the next meeting. At, at any rate, uh, it's-
It's exciting.
Timing's w- working out, because the parks master plan is just now kicking off, and this is, this was the project that, that started the whole discussion, and, and totally needs to make it into this master plan-
Yes.
-before it is, is adopted.
I just know that, uh, this, we were looking at, the, the earlier versions were really recognizing that our girls in our community didn't have any facilities, so we had spent a lot of money for the baseball fields, but the girls have been ignored and an opportunity to correct that.
As we were going through this, it was pretty apparent that we were almost having to choose between the road and the softball field. Um, and so it, it got very, very complicated, and so hopefully we get some good designs.
So sorry I missed all those meetings. But anyways, that's, that's exciting news, too.
Okay. Um, so I'd like to, um, I'd like to move on to Scapus Bay Watershed Council, so Emily Martin is here again, thank you so much for making it here tonight.
You are very welcome, and it's a pleasure to be here, thank you.
So our hope was, I know we were going to have, you know, we were just learning about the wetland delineation, and then there's other projects with, um, going on at Buxton, and so my hope was that you would be able to elaborate on some of those projects, um, so that we could have a greater understanding of what is happening there.
Yes, and I'll give you the information to every question I can answer, there's some questions that I will record so that we can get back to you as soon as possible.
Fantastic. And we have about, um, about fifteen minutes until seven o'clock. Um, so, um, if you don't mind just giving us, um, kind of a bird's eye view on the current project that you have, current projects that you have at, are involving, kind of like our areas, like the parks.
Absolutely, so I'll start with the general overview, we have an intergovernment agreement with the city of Scapuse to manage the Bella Vista, I call it the Bella Vista Nature Property, but it's just the Bella Vista Property. We also are assisting them with weed surveys at Chapman Landing, and we are also hoping to work with the Crown Zellerbach Trail folks to do weed and outreach projects. Our main projects that we're currently working on include developing a management plan for the Gurley Tract property, as well as continuing to care and maintain for our project site at Veterans Park, and to continue doing work at Chief Concomly Park and the Creekview Park as well. Plus, we are also working on the Reach F, we are waiting for our permit applications to be approved right now. And we're, once those designs are, excuse me, once the permits are approved, which it's not likely they will be this year, it's going to push into next year, but we're going to move forward as soon as we can get permission to put shovels in the ground.
Fantastic, okay.
We do have funding, and we, we would, may have to get an extension, because if we have to wait until next year to put shovels in the ground, we may have to extend the funding, but we do have funding available.
Is that BPA money, like? Is that BPA money, because I know BPA puts a lot of money into mitigation like that?
I unfortunately am forgetting who the funders are at the moment, but I can get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you, because I know that's who, who the city matched, um, was, was actually BPA money. Spend, um, twenty seven per, twenty seven percent of your electric bill goes to BPA for mitigation, and those are the kind of projects fun, so. Sounds great.
Yeah, that is great. Um, uh, with that up, I can't see if, um, Paul, okay, perfect, just, you know, raises her hand. Um, okay, so do we have, um, and then we're also looking to, um, get a potential lead, like a subcommittee, to, um, to assist with, um, Veterans Park, Chief Concomly, um, and Grabhorn? Um, would you like to share on that?
I was actually going to ask if you could possibly go to slide eleven or fifteen, so that we could see the Reach F design.
Perfect.
Thank you very much. And could you ask the question that you were asking again?
You want to, do you want to go over the slide first?
Sure, so this is our design for the Reach F section, so to give a little bit of background, which many of you may be familiar with, back in the two thousands, we did a survey to survey the South Scapuse Creek, we identified five miles of section that needed to be rest, restored, and it was put into our limiting factors analysis plan for South Scapuse Creek. This is what we call Reach F, which is one of the sections beneath Veterans Park that this design has been developed for. You can see that it showcases some large wood installations, as well as a few areas where the bank will be gradually sloped in what we call a layback, so that when the waters get very high, the water will be able to flow over and access some of the floodplain channels. We are also going to be putting in about four thousand plants, varying trees and shrubs, in order to support salmon habitat, we're also going to put shade, that'll help with shade to lower the stream. And it's going to be a fantastic project, and I cannot wait to be able to run out and start getting plants in the ground.
Um, are there any other slides that you'd like to share with us?
Yes, if you go down to the next slide. So the best way you can think about the Reach F project is to picture Veterans Park, because although there are some differences in terms of how the stream itself is laid out in the Reach F section, when they did the work at Veterans Park, they're going to be doing similar work again, so you're going to see some soil being removed as part of the gradual sloping of the targeted banks, you're going to see large wood installed in select areas to help with large woody debris recruitment, to help create some gravel spawning beds that the salmon would have historically used. And you're also going to see plants being planted following the construction. It's going to be a mixture of what we call container plants, plants that are growing in pots, and bare root plants, to ensure that we have some older established plants, which will help with survival rate, as well as to infill some of the existing areas. And we're going to be following that up with monitoring and weed management, to ensure that our plants survive and are healthy, and with any luck, we'll get a high survival rate of our target goal of at least seventy-five to eighty-five percent. And you can move to the next slide, please. So, as we've said before, this project, it's really about benefiting the community, because once we finish with the work at the Reach F section, because there's going to be more access for the floodplain during high water events, there's going to be reduction in flooding over time, as well as a lot of improved water quality for fishing people. Then you can move to the next slide, please. And of course, one of the things we're going to be pushing for is to get the public involved. We are going to be working with our volunteer base, as well as the community, wherever we can, mostly with planting projects following the construction. And we will continue to share the story of Reach F as we go forward.
Have any questions on those slides?
I was just wondering if you have any report as far as the success of the, the other project that was finished two years ago, have you seen the, any improvement as far as the habitat?
Well, I'll start off by saying that one of our alder trees was chewed down by a beaver, which excited me, because that's my, that's my first real evidence of beaver activity, so I'm very happy to see that there are now beavers through the project site. A little bit sad that he took down one of my favorite trees, but, you know, there's a good chance that we'll have some branches grow back. But the thing that I would say, I've really started to notice, is that especially following our planting project that we did back in February, we're seeing a lot of our older shrubs putting out- we're seeing a lot of our older shrubs putting out fruit and flowers. There's good survival rate. And to me, that speaks that the project is moving forward. These, it's going to take time. I would say we're really gonna start seeing a lot more noticeable changes, not just in vegetation and canopy coverage in the next three to five years. But we do have people talking to us whenever I'm out on the park site saying, it is so much better when the water gets really high. So I can give you a scientific number for how much the flow rate has changed. I can tell you, based on what people have been saying to me, we are seeing success.
Yeah, I think this project is great. My only concern is that, you know, we have an active design going on for Grabhorn Park right now. And the initial Grabhorn Park plan showed a parking area that was actually very close to the area that you guys are working on with the wood structures and et cetera. Plus, the original design had a plan to dig down quite a bit to level that property, that that area for fields. And also to, there's been discussion about artificial turf being put in. So with that, with artificial turf, that means that the ground is not as porous, obviously, so the water's gonna go somewhere. So I think this plan is great, but I just think that overall, since the design is so imminent with regards to the Grabhorn property, that I think you guys maybe need to work together just to make sure that it's gonna work, you know, as a whole, you know, not that you guys are doing one thing and then the Grabhorn design is another. That's my only thing that I see here that maybe is a red flag.
I really appreciate you bringing that up to me. There are some questions that, or you brought up that I can't answer, such as the porosity of turf. But what I will say is that as long as there is a fifty-foot buffer for the stream, which is what we have included within our own design, we don't see our Reach F project being a problem to the Godfrey, whatever the final design for the Godfrey Park turns out to be. The key thing that we want to make sure is that the buffer that we have designed for our project, which is fifty feet from the stream and what is scientifically proven to be necessary to help the stream continue to function, thrive, and meander the way nature would have intended. You just need the fifty-foot buffer to be.
So what I'm screen sharing is the original Grabhorn concept. And all I want to note on this is at the bottom of the screen, you can see those kind of black looking things and some lines. That's the Reach F project. And that's all below the trail. Most, all, correct me if I'm wrong, but all that project is in the floodplain, floodway.
I have not seen this design before now, so I.
So it's, either way, the project is so close to the creek that we can't, we can't develop there anyways. So this, everything that's happening with the redesign is not going to impact. I don't believe is going to impact that.
That's good.
Well, Isaac, I don't disagree, but at the same time, if we're so close to the design being completed, as Yul said, you know, maybe we should just, you know, just make sure, you know, Andy had a email and said he didn't think, quote unquote, that they would impact the design or there'd be any effect. Well, we could actually make sure if the design is in conjunction with the work being done.
My, so we have, we have the designs finalized. And one thing that I do want to say is that while we will potentially, we will be looking at possibly extending if we can't break ground this year. We don't have a lifetime to get this project in the ground. The funding that we do have, we can only, we need to make sure that it's spent within a certain time. Otherwise, if we have to wait or resubmit the, or wait for designs to be resubmitted, we have to essentially put the project back in the books until we can reapply for funding again. So that's why we want to move forward so that we can take care of the creek and do what we need to do to make sure that everything is in place.
The one thing I'll mention, Paul, is, I mean, defining close. We're gonna see some, some of the initial concepts that incorporate the committee's recommendations, as I mentioned earlier, towards the end of August. But we're, it's not like that's gonna be a vote and then engineer stamps it and it's good to go a month later. It will take some time in order to drill down to the level of details that are gonna be needed for an actual engineered plan. But I know that the Watershed Council has had this project planned for quite some time. But that being said, we'll, we'll be sure to share any, any potential designs with Watershed Council as well.
I mean, concerning that this is the first time you're seeing this design. I mean, it was publicly shown, you know, many, many times. And all the work you're doing is, you know, right next to this designs. And, you know, the area above where it says under your floodplain, that whole area is gonna be dug down. I think it was like five and a half feet or something like that to make it level. So I mean, I, I'm not an expert in this, but just if you guys work together with the design guys, I mean, just, just to assure that we don't have a problem. That's.
I think, I think that's what he was saying about with the engineering is that we, when we get to the engineering stage is when that kind of conversation happens. When we can get those accurate measurements about who's doing what, where, where the exact floodway line is, where exactly the Reach F is in relation to stormwater facility you see or whatever. That happens at that higher, much more detailed engineering level, and we're not quite there yet. When we get there, those conversations do happen.
I would also like to point out that we had two members of the Scappus Bay Watershed Council on the G-PAC. So this may be the first time that Emily has seen this, but this is not the first time that Scappus Bay Watershed Council has seen this.
Thank you.
Thank you for saying that.
And that was the point that I was wanting to make, Cara. This is Nicole Ferrero with the Scappus Bay Watershed Council.
Hello, Nicole.
And for Paul's benefit, Emily has not been involved in the planning process. It has been myself and Dana prior to her departing the council and Andy. And so Emily has graciously agreed to step in for Andy for this presentation tonight. And like she mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, if she doesn't know the answer, she's happy to go and find the answer for you. From my perspective, I believe that there has been coordination with the Watershed Council. If there are concerns regarding the elevations, we can certainly take a look at that again with the park design folks.
Thank you for, for commenting, Nicole. Okay. Any last comments on this before, Paul, would you, did you have another comment? Okay.
No, no, I just, no, that's all. Thank you.
Well, I just wanted to kind of, thank you for bringing it up because that was my question too about collaboration. And are they also gonna communicate? Are you guys gonna help the development of, within that area they're developing, what type of trees? Because I know that's important. Sometimes developers don't know the right kind of trees to plant and vegetations and that would complement out on the, by the creek. So I'm sure that you guys will, I'm sure they're communicating of that. That's what I just heard. And I just want to say a comment, I mean, if you guys, I've been, I walk the Crown Zee Trail. I love it, by the way, and I appreciate the trashcans and the benches. I have noticed that people are starting to go fishing. Somehow they fish and I'm like, fish good, I have no idea, but, but so I've enjoyed that walk with my husband. And I've noticed that there's this, some kind of plant that leaves droppings of really like little black droppings everywhere. I'm not sure what kind of animal is eating them and then leaves droppings like along the path. But I've also noticed that there is a blackberry tree that's gonna be growing soon, so that's gonna be.
Coyotes are very fond.
Yes.
Of berries.
Yeah. Sorry, what was that?
Coyotes are very fond.
Is that what it is?
Yeah, there's cherry trees all up and down as well.
Right, and that's what I think it is, and they just leave a trail.
Council Santagio, if I may, on the blackberries on the trail, thank you for mentioning that. We, we had our excavator, which has the attachment to, to mow along, you know, it's an arm mower, if you will. It was out of commission, needed repairs, it was waiting for parts. It just got deployed back out into the field within the last week, so.
Yeah, I know they can get out of control.
Yeah, we've got some catch up to do.
Thank you for your comments, Council Santagio. Okay, so one of the last things, since it's seven o'clock, is that you are looking for kind of like a liaison, a Parks and Recreation Liaison.
Yes.
For three parks to be kind of monitoring for native plants, things like that. Would you care to elaborate?
Well, essentially, what I'm hoping is that we can continue to partner with your organization because, as I said previously, we are a two-person staff. There's a lot of work for just two people. And the more eyes we have on the ground, especially people who are out there on a daily basis, the easier it is for me to do my work to help take care of the plants and the projects, especially once we get to the point of having plants in the ground at the Grabhorn Reach F project site. So whether that be you have one person that I, or this council talks to, just to say, hey, how are things going on? Or I coordinate with everyone here to talk about upcoming events or needs that I have for the parks. That's really what I'm looking for, is just an invitation to be in greater communication so that you and we and I can continue to take care of our parks and create a healthy, thriving community, both the fish, the wildlife, and the people.
Well, I think we would love to have you here as much as possible, for sure. I think this is a really great, I think it's great that you've been here for the past couple of meetings. I think this is really helpful. I think that, again, to Paul's point, like the more that we can coordinate, I think the more seamless a lot of our planning will be. My hope is to have a liaison. I was hoping to ask Andrew, but he is not here tonight, because I know he's already working with you.
We should just go ahead and appoint him.
I think he has a new baby, so he might not appreciate that. But my hope is to, he might be a good fit, or we can just continue to, you know, and we might, we might trade off who's there and, or just kind of reaching out every once in a while if we see things. In the meantime, if you wouldn't mind sending us a list of things that you would hope that we would look for when we were there. I would, I mean, I'm occasionally there, so I'd be happy to say like, oh, these are the things I noticed today. And I could happily shoot you an email.
I would love to do that. And one thing that might help, we are doing a weed workshop at the Scappus Library this Saturday. I'm going to be teaching people how to identify priority weeds, which meadow nap, weed and garlic mustard are plants we're trying to keep our eyes out, just because they are early detection, rapid response weeds. So yes, I would be very happy to send you a list and you need to drop just an invitation to attend the workshop.
Perfect.
For the workshop, Isaac, if you sent us some materials, we can get them posted on our social media pages. If you can forward those over. Anytime you have something.
I will send it over tonight after the meeting.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Did we ever end up changing the city app to have more park information? Could we like put pictures of the weeds on that?
Yeah, that would be great.
Not something I can turn around in one day, but.
But it's a tool we could use for.
I think so. We, we probably can.
Yeah.
I know that, you know, obviously, we, we, the city pays a subscription fee annually to that, and it comes with all kinds of support services. So if we ask them to configure something a different way, then they'll do that for us. Have some ideas on that, we can circle back soon. Anything that can, that can help out the Watershed Council. I mean, the city has, we have a larger platform, just in the sense that we have the app and social media. And I think we also have an Instagram page. Our, our Facebook and our Instagram pages are the most. Just got Instagram this week. It's obviously popular because it's Instagram. We do have the app, which some people have, because we're always happy to post that.
I can't tell you how much I appreciate that's. I mean, I, I've gotten very good at sending Facebook posts, but yes, I will definitely make sure I reach out to you and for media support as well. Thank you.
And in either Isaac or I, or if you happen to be in a meeting with Dave and I for whatever reason, you just mentioned it to me and I'll, I'll make sure the hall gets, gets wind of it.
I have a suggestion, I don't know, just an idea. Interactive type of, because I have like little nephew, like my niece and nephew, they like to take pictures of plants and maybe doing a hashtag and can you find these weeds and kind of make it more interactive, some prizes? I mean, something fun. It can, it can be an activity for a family to go around and try to find these types of weeds, let's just say.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I would like to talk to my partner, Andy Magi, before we say yes. But yes, I think that's a great suggestion. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Remembered one thing about park maps and, and updates. I actually submitted change requests to Google where a couple, a couple of the park properties were misidentified, or they were shown as, as, as private or weren't showing as a park. So I've sent those. If you have any of those updates or corrections, something misspelled, please let me know and I can put those on.
Yeah, Chapman Landing took you to the lower part and not the actual parking lot. And Vista's not on the website at all. I don't know if you weren't ready to do that, but it wasn't on the website at all. Hey, well.
I have a quick announcement.
One last, oh, Movies in the Park.
Yeah, so happy to announce we're doing Movies in the Park again this year. This is year four. Been working with Jeff at the library and very grateful that we got a grant from Columbia River PUD because rather than having a sheet for our movie screen, we actually have a blow up theater now. So it's a big theater, thirty-two in, thirty-two feet. We've got the, our new Scappus Police Chief is gonna be participating with hot dogs and hamburgers. They're free, but we will be asking for fifty cent donations to go to the community club. And we have a lot of fun movies coming up. Our first one is Napoleon Dynamite, which is a quirky favorite of mine. And we are going to have some great live music as well, including a Grammy nominated reggae artist that's gonna be performing not this week, but next week. So it is not, well, the first week in August. So every Friday at seven PM, the fun starts. We have flotillas donating pizza certificates. So we'll be doing Pizza Bingo again, which is hugely popular and much easier than giving out slices of pizza and watching people get sick. So, and it's free, so we're really excited. We hope you guys get the word out and if anyone wants to help, let me know.
Just curious if there's an update on the Adventure Fest, is that going on?
Yeah, there was a great video that I have seen on Facebook that has been going around. Yeah, there's, it seems to be really well done.
It's up to you if you have time. We wait till next meeting, there's only gonna be twenty days before the event.
Yeah, if you just have a short update, that would be fantastic.
So Adventure Fest planning is pretty much done. All the assets are in line, so we have site plans, traffic control plans, all of the events, little events like rides and inflatable zip lines and movie screens and et cetera are lined up. Vendors are getting lined up. Everything's going well. Still looking for sponsorships, though. Definitely, definitely, definitely could use help. If you know somebody, if you wanna give a sponsorship to the event, definitely could use that. But otherwise, everything's fine. There'll be a movie on Friday night. I think they're doing some, one of the new jungle movies, something Jungle Cruise or something. They have a fifty by fifty blow up screen. It's very large.
It's bigger than ours.
It's very big, very cool. Stadium Art Sound System, there'll be bands and music all day. The Beer Garden's gonna be open to everybody until seven o'clock, so you can have your family in there up till seven. As far as I know right now, all the rides and attractions are free. Still trying to get the axe throwing, there's gonna be chainsaw carving, there's gonna be all kinds of stuff. The Sheriff Posse is gonna be there. Run for Neil, Run with Neil's gonna be going on, just like last year. Hopefully bigger and better than ever and awesome. Went well last year, so yeah. Date is September tenth, night for the movie. Parking's gonna be in Grabhorn. It's gonna be free, recommended donation to dance teams, they're gonna be staffing the parking this year. Did well, that really helped them this year after COVID, kind of come back, get their, get their stuff in order. So it'll happen again. Should be good.
It could be a parade this year?
Nope, there's no parade. We were, had concerns with the city about safety. We are still working on getting fully staffed. And so, you know, making sure everybody was safe. We didn't have cars flying off Highway thirty into the parade route into paradegoers was, was a big issue for us.
Is that a shortage of police, is that what you were concerned with?
Yeah, we, we would, our, our police department was concerned about being able to adequately staff that, as well as do regular calls and regular shifts. So for the event, we actually have two security staffs hired for that to help offset the. actually have two security staffs hired for that to help offset. Um, the department is doing a lot. Uh, last council meeting, chief stated that we are, we're going to be interviewing and a lieutenant. We have hired one officer. We have another one that's almost out of background. We have two more that we're going to be putting into background. Um, so things are going well. It's just, it takes time. The new chief came on about a month ago and I think the interims were a little bit hesitant to staff up before the new chief came on for obvious reasons. So.
The new lieutenant, did I hear?
Uh, there were interviewing, yep, interviewing shortly. Um, so that should be in the books, but things are good. Um, a parade's not off the table for next year for sure. We know how much, everybody loved it. It went well. Uh, it's just, we want to make sure everybody stays, stays safe. Any other questions? Adventure Fest?
Uh, real quick on that one. So I'm, uh, again, running the Run with Neil event. So please, love to see everybody out there. It's not just a run, it's a walk as well. And uh, we also do a 1K kids race. Um, and we have a lot more prizes and fun stuff for the kids this year. And so I ask everybody to either participate, um, or tell your friends or neighbors to participate. It's for a great cause. Um, it's 100% uh, run by volunteers and all the money goes to uh, youth, um, uh, basically for uh, social and mental health for youth, uh, athletes and students. So, um, again, anybody can participate and please spread the word. Thank you.
That's all.
Absolutely.
All right. And with that, let's adjourn for the night. Everybody have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you very much for inviting me.
Thanks for coming, Emily.
Hey Paul, before you go, um, how do I sign up to help volunteer with the Run for Neil?
I'll send you a text.
Okay. Do you have my number?
I sure do.
This is Nicole Ferrera. Are you sure?
Oh, no, I thought that was JJ. Nicole, no.
I'm here.
I thought JJ was going to help me.
I'm going to help you, of course.
Nicole, so if, uh, if, if you can send me an email, it should be on the, on the listing that Isaac sent out, that'd be great.
Cool. All right. Well, have, have a good, uh, no, I'll probably, I'm going to try and advertise it, um, at our company in Portland.
Oh, fantastic. Yeah, please send me an email. Yeah, I'll send you all types of stuff.
Cool. All right.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
So, um, the next. Actually, it's too much to. It's awful. Yeah. I think about that. And put that on for. Um, do you mind if she goes to all who posted like September? Just a minor. Yeah. But yeah, yeah, that would be good. So that way we can.
Yeah, I thought it was.
Because I do want, it's a little bit too soon to get updates for everybody's mind. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
For sure. Yeah. To be there with the kids is great. I will, I will be there. And then we're going to get our tickets soon. Yeah. So, uh. Yeah, watch that. He just went on. The last part was great. I haven't been here in like a while.